I want to propose one idea that we've been talking about. Just putting together, you know, purchasing a, uh, kind of like a small bus or something to go up and down sixty-five highway and run to different places to pick people, pick them around, you know, in that route. Because I think, I see the need. And I'd like to open it up for discussion if possible. And, yeah, I think we do it at a very reasonable price. It helps people and brings something more to, to the city of Harrison. This is a beautiful city.
Are you talking about from here to Branson? Or just up and down our highway?
Right.
Just like a route?
Right.
Okay.
We were talking about, you know, I'm, I'm originally from Chicago, so, you know, I, um, I'm used to that, you know, so like a three dollar per ride, or maybe a ten ride for, you know, less, or a monthly pass, or something like that. You know, we're willing to work with everyone to find out what works out the best. But I'm here tonight because obviously we're asking for you to transfer the taxi company from John Waters to myself, which we purchased from him. And we continue to serve the public as best as we possibly can.
Okay, and we'll vote on that later in the meeting. But at the same time, if you want to come back, maybe next month to the committee meeting and talk to us about your new idea of up and down the highway.
Can we, can we possibly put that on the agenda?
Yeah, we sure can. We'll put it on right now.
All right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Okay. Anyone from Taxi Transfer?
Hello. Hi, I'm Charlotte Wright, and here for Taxi Transfer. Um, I really don't have a lot more to say than what I did the last time that I was here, but I wanted to make sure and stand up in case anyone had any questions, or anything that I could be able to help you understand any better, or...
No, I think this is just a formality that we have to go through, and I do think folks have said everything last time. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. So that'll close the public hearing, and we'll go on to the council meeting at this time. Roll call.
Chris Head. Mary Jean Krieger.
Present.
Mitch Magnus.
Present.
Linda DeWalt.
Present.
Bill Oswell.
Present.
Heath Kirkpatrick.
Present.
Joel Williams.
Here.
Wayne Cohen.
Present.
Okay, my favorite pastor would say our prayer, please.
All right, let's, let's pray. God, we stand here before you, Lord, thanking you for this great city of Harrison that we get to live and serve, and God, just thank you for these that have come out tonight that care about our city and the matters that take place. God, as always, we ask for your wisdom to make decisions, to represent the people, and to do everything with integrity and honesty. God, you've placed us in these positions, and just give us the wisdom to govern, and we just thank you for your grace over this city, and it's in Jesus' name. Amen.
Join me in the prayer.
With allegiance to the light of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You see it? Okay. Before we start, we'll have somebody that just walked in that I want to introduce to everyone. The Harrison Regional Chamber of Commerce new president and CEO is Bob Largent. Bob, would you, would you stand up?
I'm standing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to be here and to represent the city of Harrison for all that the city is going to do in the future. I look forward to this opportunity. I thank the chamber, I thank the city for the opportunity to do this. So you'll see more of me, or can I hear a lot more about the chamber and Lord, and the city. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We need approval of two minutes now. We have the January twenty-fourth, the last full meeting.
Very much. We approve the January twenty-fourth meeting.
Second? We have a motion and a second. No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any one of those? Okay, thank you. We also need to approve the minutes of the February twentieth special call meeting.
Make a motion, we approve the coming into the February twentieth, and special call council meeting, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Department reports. Chief Grady.
Uh, the monthly report for January is in front of you. I think I've put hard copies to everybody that needed them. Uh, just a couple things I wanted to touch on here. Citations issued for the month of January were three hundred and twenty-nine. Last year, same month, was one hundred and twelve. Uh, warnings issued was five fifty-two last month, or last year, and January it was one seventy-four. So that's a quite a bit from last year. Uh, DWIs came in at four. Last year we were at five. We had nineteen hundred and ninety-six calls for service the month of January twenty-nineteen. Twenty-eighteen, we have sixteen ninety-six. Uh, next page there is the resource officers. Counseling sessions with students, they had five. Conferences with parents or adults was eleven. Conferences with staff was seven. They had fifty-two different classroom lectures in the month of January. And, uh, there's some other numbers there involving something that our school resource officers done throughout the month. Uh, next page, well, the next three pages is the criminal investigation division. Shows cases that were opened and closed. You will go all the way to page two of three on that. Shows, uh, year-to-date total number of cases worked is forty-two, and total number was closed was forty-nine. Of course, the ones that were closed, in addition to the forty-two, was from the previous months or previous year. Narcotics division, they seized twenty-five hundred and fifty-four dollars worth of narcotics or for arrest. Of course, they're working several different undercover operations with, uh, multi-agencies, with multiple agencies right now. So we might have some more numbers in the near future on that. Uh, warrants divisions, there are eight hundred and eighty-three warrants. And out of that fifty-nine physical arrests were made, uh, they collected a hundred and twenty dollars in warrant service fees. Animal control reporters on the next page, there was twenty-six dogs that were picked up. Uh, then a number of them, twelve, went to the Humane Society and fourteen was returned to their owners. Uh, the last page is the community officers. Uh, contact the local businesses, twenty-nine. All the numbers I think is important. Total number of people they reached, their different events that they were at, seven hundred and ninety-nine. So, if there are questions about the monthly report, I'll be glad to answer them.
Chief Grady, can you, um, work on the number of citations issued and warnings issued up to that degree? Can you comment on that driving that?
There are several things that drive that, depending on how many officers worked, special enforcement, which would be overtime, may have that. Weather can always play a factor in that. I'd like to thank the guys who's out there working maybe a little harder than they have in the past, so, uh, that's what I would hope.
I notice they're more visible like you.
Well, and, uh, I hope that's because they're out working more, and also our take-home policy as far as driving them in the city. I, I hope that's helping to, to cheer a lot of crap down. Heard that from several people, let's see a lot more of them. Uh, one thing, I'm sorry, that name's a true question.
Yes, sir.
One thing I want to mention, Sergeant Rocky Smith's on evening shift right now. He has some information on some folks that stole some stuff from Mountain Home Depot. I think the article's in the paper, but for those of you that don't know, they, his shift done a, a good piece of, uh, that evening. They actually set up on the vehicle that was described, spent an hour or so waiting for them to get to Harrison, got it, got it stopped, stolen property's in plain sight, made free arrests. Not only did we recover, uh, stolen property from Mountain Home, we recovered, there was some stolen property from the local residents here in Harrison, where we recovered some stolen property too, out of Sandy Hill. So I wanted to acknowledge those. And, uh, the only other thing I have, which I think will be brought up by Mr. Cat, or Mr. Magnus, some line item budget moves that I hope to, to get approved tonight. The, uh, we had approval, and we had in our budget, uh, approval for a evening animal patrol officer. Chief Cadle and I looked at the numbers on that, and we don't feel that it's in our best interest to hire an evening animal patrol officer. Uh, what was the percentage of the calls, John?
Three hundred and twenty-four after the animal patrol officer went home.
Right. So, and out of those three vicious that were handled by officers, the rest of them either can be handled the next day, or handled by the officer for that evening. So, uh, what I had requested and hopefully get approved is that we move the amount of funds that was mentioned in the committee meeting to payroll, to fund a additional police officer for patrol. And, uh, that will allow us to have six officers on patrol for each shift. We run three shifts, forty-four hours a day, and that will also free up our K nine units to concentrate their efforts on interdiction. I believe that's all I have. No one has any other further questions?
Chief?
Yes, sir.
I'm your school resource officer. I know I've been into these, a lot of people may not be familiar with what goes on in the classroom and lectures. Uh, you and John, do they want to stress that so they can know what goes on in the classroom and lecture session?
Sure. Uh, basically, RSRs, they do it from lectures throughout the school, whether it be on rows, texting, or sexting, and stuff like that. So they go in and teach the lectures, whatever's asked me at school. Basically, they'll go in and do that, and we have one coming up, I think, next month that we're working on, on social media. So it just varies depending on what the school asks, but a lot of it is on texting. And, uh, we'll do some, vaping's a big thing right now. We're working on a big vaping monitor, we're going to put through the schools. So, just kind of varies on what the school's going through at the moment, what they request. And whatever they ask, we'll put the class together to work in our RSR objectives.
Thanks, Chief.
Bye.
All right. Thanks, Chief. Wade, you have anything to report on?
I have no items to report on, other than the, the list full of items on the agenda, unless somebody has any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Mark?
I don't have anything in particular, other than the monthly activity for January. And of course, we all know that, that the line searches, things we're done with.
Yeah.
Uh, my guys and PD guys, and county guys, all work a lot together. We got that taken care of, so we're proud to have that behind us. And we just need to keep the, obviously, the families in our mind going forward. They've got a lot to pay you to do, so, um, I know our call volume was up in January. We were just a hair under two hundred calls. We run a lot of medical responses, first responding for the animal service. Some instructor development training for the guys. Um, we're getting ready to have ISO come and visit us soon, so, at least some reporting on that within the next couple of months. Other than that, it's just the kind of the normal stuff going on. Does anybody have any questions for me, or?
I see that we have, uh, something else that says we're hiring firefighters?
Yes.
Is it that?
Yes, we have had two of our guys, Jim Crager and Roger Edwards, have announced a retirement. They, uh, both have been in a lot of years, and they've decided that for various reasons, it's time to move on. Don't miss both of them here, they've given us a lot, a lot of years, so, we're going to replace them again.
All right, Chief, thank you. Luke?
All right, uh, just kind of want to do a wrap-up. We, I gave you the December financial statements, uh, and, and those financial statements that show about a three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar surplus. As I mentioned before, uh, we couldn't close everything until February twenty-eighth, because we still get straggling invoices. As you can tell, it's actually already down to a little over three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, so there's thirty thousand dollars in expenses there that, that had, had to be recorded in last year. Based on those numbers, sales tax, obviously, is up. You can see the percentages there for county and city. Uh, it's been a big boost for us. Um, we didn't anticipate that, but with all the new businesses coming in, internet sales, it's been great for us, um, with a caveat, and I'll get to that in just a second. Um, property taxes are up, building permits are up, that's kind of what you see whenever you see some growth in the city, uh, so we always love to see those go up as well. Uh, and these are over last year, I just want to point that out, not necessarily over budget. Uh, and then franchise fees are down. You'll see that probably over the next several years, it's just going to be down a little bit. We just have less people with cable. Um, that's the main driver of, of why it's going down. Uh, people with Netflix and everything else, all the internet-based videos and stuff, we don't get any kind of franchise fees off of that, so that does go down a little bit. Um, and then it's also based on weather, um, so if you have a, a really hot summer, you get more franchise fees from InterGee. If you have a really cold winter, you get more franchise fees from Black, from Black Hills, so, um, that will play a role in that as well. In that three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, FEMA, uh, the difference between revenue and expenses is about a hundred and thirty-five, so that drove up as well. A lot of those were expenses were in twenty-seventeen, so we don't see those coming forward. Uh, water and sewer was a deficit, but that was basically due to our, our, our payoff of our loans. Uh, that's how that worked. Street funds, you'll see here, I don't need to go through all these, but, um, you'll see fire fund had a deficit, but we also bought a five-hundred-thousand-dollar fire truck in there, um, and had an additional payment. So overall, we've had a pretty much, a pretty good surplus, um, through across all funds, with the exception of maybe some loan payments on there, so, um, good news for the whole year. We're up. Um, I also am going to have the water and sewer audit for you all to approve this next time, I have a legislative audit. We haven't approved that quite yet. So, um, those two will be coming up at the committee meeting to go over. Um, hopefully you all have received the copy. If you have not, you will get that in your hands, and then we need to approve that hopefully at the next council meeting, because we tend to forget those and, and put them off a little longer than what we should, so. Um, the new details for this month, twenty-nineteen, uh, we have renegotiated some interest rates at, uh, the local bank that we use. Um, it's going to be a, a very good rate, um, and, um, it, it's not going to, I don't know that it's going to quite double our interest, um, for the year, but it's a substantial increase in, in the amount of money that we're going to receive across funds, so, um, that's good news, and hopefully, um, we'll, we'll share that in the next budget, kind of what we're anticipating. Um, I'm going to drop down to CD rates, because we also went out for some CD rates, or some CDs, to see what we could get over and above our checking accounts. Uh, we got some additional funding there, or additional percentages there, so we are going to move some money over into some CDs, uh, just to, to get a basically an additional twenty, closer to twenty thousand dollars in interest for the year, so, uh, you will notice that we are going to be moving some of those. And last but not least, I said sales tax is up with a caveat. Unfortunately, we just got told, um, on, on, last Friday, or last, or maybe last Thursday, um, our sales taxes were way down this year, or this January. It's a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars down, actually, in January. Typically, uh, I think we are at about five hundred thousand dollars roughly, so it's a pretty significant hit, um, that we're looking at for January. It's all based on an audit that was done in sales tax. Um, and unfortunately, as much as we've tried, sales tax, uh, the Department of Sales Tax, Department of Finance down in Little Rock, will not release that information on who that audit is. I don't, I don't blame them for not giving us the name of the person, but I simply was just trying to ask if, if, uh, they could tell me whether it was somebody that didn't record it, or didn't have to record that sales tax, or if somebody reported it in the wrong area. They couldn't even tell me that. So, um, they also tried to tell us that it was a taxi service, no offense, and didn't even plan that, but that would have involved fifteen million dollars in taxi revenue, and I would have signed up to be a taxi driver as well.
You're, you're, you're set up. We were, we were overpaid during the last three years, a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, and they're wanting us to pay them back. So that's why they're taking that from January.
It's not even wanting us to pay it back, they just take it.
Yeah, they don't even, they just, they don't see it.
They didn't see it, did they?
We don't see it.
We do not see that. Um, so all the money that is collected, just kind of a brief history of sales tax, the money that is collected in, in the area, um, this does affect Boone County also, just for everybody to know. Um, the sales tax division out of DFNA, um, Department of Finance Administration, they get three percent of the sales tax off the top. Um, that's what they get to run the program, and so we're, we're discussing with them, you know, you're getting paid to do all this stuff, we just need a little more information. We're not asking for, you know, business's income. We know, we, we know you can't give us Walmart sales for the month, and that's okay, uh, just tell us what happened.
Give us a hand.
Just let us know what, what was going on, but they can't even do that. So, all they can tell us is there was an audit, uh, that was done, um, and it could have been over a three-year period. They won't even say it was over a three-year period, but it could have been. Um, they, they, again, they said it was taxi, um, they have, I've actually called back, and they have since said, no, that's not correct, and I don't remember the exact line. Um, and I won't go into all the NICS code details, but it's off of what they call data processing, processing, posting, and related services. It's in that area, but that could be a wide range of things, and I, I've read the description, and that didn't help me either.
We called a, a few of the court members today and advised them that their experience in the same thing. Um, and it, uh, they, they had no idea yet, so we're going to get their help in digging, trying to figure out what exactly happened, but we have a feeling right now, we're not going to know. The state's just taking our money, and that's it.
Well, in limited discussions I had with Luke regarding this issue, I said at the very least that the mayor and the, uh, county judge might want to visit with the head of DFNA and say, we won't disclose this publicly, but can you tell us what went on? So, I don't know if that's a possibility or not, but just for them just to take the funds without any explanation.
Yeah, I know.
Or why can't, why can't the mayor, the county judge, visit with our state representative?
Well, somebody within...
I mean, I would think working backwards, they're going to work it our way. They didn't hesitate to take that hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. And I understand there's some privacy involved, but I also understand that somebody else isn't answering.
We were hoping we'd uncovered something today, but again, a dead end on that, so we're not going to quit trying to figure it out.
We called them down at Municipal League, their, their division of finance down there. They talked to the Arkansas Legislative Audit Division, and we still got to hold them, so, um, we will keep working it, uh, hopefully we'll have some more answers, but it's about thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars down in each fund. Uh, so general fund, police fund, fire fund, and then infrastructure will be double that, so seventy thousand dollars down. It may very well be accurate, and something like somebody wasn't supposed to pay sales tax, and that's their right, they can go back three years and, and get that money. It's just, we don't know.
The old man says trust to verify.
Do you expect a surprise for the February situation?
I didn't expect the January.
Well, and, and that's worth mentioning, I mean, if they've, they've done this once.
Well, and I even told them, you know, we, we go back and we get what they call the NICS code, so you can see what area you get the sales tax from. It's limited information, but at least you get that, but I told them, I said, look, I can't even trust your report now. If you tried to be telling me it was taxi, and now you're moving it to this one, how do I tell them?
Well, I mean, giving the term, like you're saying, it may be, uh, this may be over three years. What three years? What if they're now going to audit another year for that same business or businesses? And we get hit again in February or March? So, some explanation would...
There's nobody's budget that can maintain that kind of hit.
Are they going to take it out over three years?
They've, they've offered it.
They, they've, they've offered to do it over several months, um, you know, that cannot be as big of a hit, but...
Part of you?
Part of the reason, um, that we have saved and have our reserves are in, are for reasons like this, and that's why I'm happy that we do, almost all of our, uh, funds are over that six-month threshold, so we can survive six months of nothing. But, you know, obviously, we're not going to have nothing, but this is why we have those reserves in place for some of that, and so I just told them, let's just rip the band-aid off and go on.
Okay. All right. Luke, uh, thanks for the bad news.
Hey, the good news though is with interest, so, we're going to make up for that.
Luke and I have been working on that interest for, since January one, and we've worked really hard, and you have also, and we've really come up with some good deals, and then this. It almost wiped out all of our interest. Uh, John Grigsby, you want to come in here and sit down? We got a seat up here for you. Folks, this is John Grigsby. He works on about every Red Claws venture across the United States. When something happens, he goes and helps them. And, uh, I know you have a, you have called Time Standing, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, join us. Um, uh, who's David Wilson? Hey, David.
Good evening. I don't have a, for the sake of time, and without getting into too much detail, um, I want you to know that anytime you ever have questions, or anything that want to know what's going on, feel free to call me, email me, or just stop by the office, I'll be glad to go into as much detail as you want about what we're doing in the department. Just staying really busy, and we've got our new website that y'all approved last year. Should be going live on that in the next week or so, so, it'll be the same domain, it'll just look quite a bit, a lot, a lot newer, a lot fresher, I think you'll like it, and it's still a work in the process, so we'll, you'll be seeing lots of things happen there. Um, got a new server for the police department that's going to be coming in, we're going to be doing that, it's going to help a lot with recording and the vehicles and getting in current, because they're, they're running on some old software. That was approved in the budget too for this year, so, uh, other than that, that's the high-level overview, but like I said, you're always welcome to stop by, I'd be glad to visit. Any questions for me?
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Chuck?
Glad I had Paul David, not Luke. Big up Dave is, uh, Dog Park. We got the location, uh, we actually researched, and we're going to apply for a grant in May. It's up to twenty-five thousand dollars to put in the Dog Park, so we won't know till June or July, but we're guaranteeing we're going to have a Dog Park by the end of the year. Uh, so we're just kind of seeing, I talked to the May Society, they're all about helping us raise funding if we need to, helping us get donations if we need to do that, and doing a month of dog adoptions and cat adoptions, whatever they can get us down there at the Dog Park, uh, and we're going to partner with them to do that. So that's the big update I have right now, so, we got a chance to get twenty-five thousand, they give it to eight communities in the, in the United States a year, so we're hoping that we, maybe we can try to do it, to receive that. If not, we'll do the best we can, have the best Dog Park we can afford, so, uh, that's where we're at on the Dog Park issue, and I want to say, we had our first gaming tournament. I, I don't know if I discussed, I know we talked about some gaming things, but we had our first gaming tournament at the youth center in February, and, uh, we had forty people play in the gaming tournament, and we did surveys on the, from every, we got thirty-eight surveys back out of forty participants, and we had, like, an average score of nine out of ten, the way we ran it, so, and they're already calling us to sign up for the next one, which will be in April, so, it's actually, it's really good deal, and like I told... Like I told the CBD meeting this morning, if you would have walked through the youth center during that tournament and came in there to watch, you would have thought we were giving an ACT test, because it was completely silent and focused in there, and turned it, but it was a really good deal. But that's something, I think, with the parks, can you roll and offer something to the community that's not been made in the past, so we're really excited about that. Any other questions?
Where is the Dog Park?
The Dog Park will be being located behind us, off Stonewall Road, behind the soccer complex. The patch we use for overflow parking is actually owned by the city, so that's where we're looking at putting it, right down there by the soccer complex. Where if somebody wants to continue to walk their dog around the trail, they can also take them in there, and there'll be some play equipment, and waterfalls in there, they can give them water, so we're kind of good. And we'll have it divided, that's one of the big things, when I researched, it will be divided for big dogs and small dogs. It won't just be one big area for all dogs. It will be divided.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Shonda?
I don't have a report this month, but next month I'm hoping to present my annual report to the council.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move on to the committee reports. Joel, it looks like you're up, and you've got two items, we're back to the taxes.
I just told the city attorney.
There you go.
So the city of Harrison has an ordinance on the books that requires a resolution for taxi. Anyone who wants to operate a taxi in the city of Harrison, we need a resolution for that. We've got two tonight, advanced taxi and the taxi transpo, so what we would need here would be a resolution for each one. First one for advanced taxi, a resolution for them to allow the transfer from advanced taxi to the new owners, and for the city clerk to issue a new license amendment for taxi transpo, the same thing, and a motion for approved resolution authorizing the city clerk to issue the license for taxi transpo. So I would entertain those motions, and I would ask that, I think it would be fine to read those entitled, and these are one, the resolutions, so they're just a one-read, so we do that with an upper.
Okay. Looking for a motion to approve advanced taxi?
I'll make that motion.
A motion? In a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries.
May I speak?
I'm sorry?
May I speak?
Yes, yes.
You know, that Dog Park thing is real cool, I really like that. I don't know if you want to do that. Chief, I hope that, previously I wanted to use that and talk about stuff that was going on, but one of the things I wanted to say is, you know, I was asked to put, you know, purchase a taxi company here in town, and I put my whole, you know, heart and beat in this to provide a service for the community and to build a program forward. You know, we've had several issues that have come up from the public, moonlight and whatnot, from transpo, whatnot. I would ask you, I would ask the council to consider that every driver needs to file a 1099, needs to be licensed, needs to be approved, and that all vehicles have the taxi tags, the tags are being taxed, so.
Okay. Thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion to approve taxi transpo?
Make a motion to approve your resolution for taxi transpo, so.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, you're approved. We have two taxi companies, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Magnus?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, we have actually four budget amendments. I'll go through them, and I've asked for the role of all of them at one time to save time. The first one is the one that Chief Grady referred to, and all we're doing is moving payroll from the dispatch department or the animal patrol officer, and some budget items, line items from the radio systems, not all of it, to payroll for the line officer. So that change, roughly, or that budget amendment, changes roughly about fifty thousand dollars, a little over that. So it's net zero in the budget. The other three are just cleanup items, and we discussed these in committee. It was a miskeyed number that Luke had in our police wellness fund, it goes from a budget amount of seven thousand two hundred and fifty down to seven hundred and twenty dollars. And then back to taxis, all we're doing is making sure that our revenues and expenditures match, and that would be going from the taxi revenue, the transpro's budget amount is thirty-eight hundred dollars to six thousand, and the expense item, line item, goes from thirty-seven hundred to six thousand dollars. So I'd like to make a motion to approve these four budget amendments. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, in a second. Any discussion on either of these? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carried, all four approved. Thanks for doing it that way.
That's all we have in the finance.
Excellent. Okay, we have Internal Affairs, Linda.
Nothing to discuss for me.
Excellent. Ms. Craig?
We will be having a cemetery meeting on March the 27th at 12 o'clock here in the council room.
Is that all you have?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell.
Sir.
We've been waiting for this.
It's pretty simple here, Mr. Mayor. Actually, it's going to come to you. We came out of committee with an approval for inland, for the whole council to consider their rate increase. They have their representative here, it's, you would like them to make their presentation?
I believe they would like to speak.
Yes. Bobby Brennan, or whoever could be in the hot seat here.
Is there the clicker? Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay? Great. It's great to be back, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak again today. First of all, I wanted to recognize some people in the audience. We brought a lot of our employees with us today and their families, and you'll notice they're sporting a new t-shirt. It has our new logo on it. As a company, we are actually in the process of changing our name. The new name will be Orion Waste Solutions, and I think I talked with a few of you at our last meeting. As a company, we are currently operating under three different names in different parts of the country, and we needed to change the name to try and get to one brand. And so Orion is going to be the new brand. For those of you that don't know, Orion is actually the most recognized constellation in the sky, and if you look at the logos, it basically outlines three stars, which is Orion's belt, and that's what it's designed to look like. So you'll see a little bit more, this is my model here, especially for this presentation. And so that's what the, where the logo came from. So I wanted to recognize certainly these hardworking individuals.
Yeah, well, thank you guys for coming.
So our presence here in front of council is not just about a rate request, it's really about the solvency of Orion Waste Solutions. It's about our ability to continue to provide the services that we do to the city. We are one of, if not the largest contractor that the city has, and I consider us an essential service. We touch residents and businesses multiple times a week, and almost no other contractor at the city does that. As I said, these people work very hard every day. Some of them have been up since 2:00 this morning, and they're here tonight to represent what we're trying to do here. We know, and I talked about this last week, that there's been service hiccups in the past. Those were primarily in the fall and summer of 2017, and we heard last month, when people stood up at the podium, or two weeks ago, that the services have definitely improved. And we are looking forward, we have a new management team. Dave Hawkins, who is my model, is our local general manager, he has done an incredible job of continuing to improve the service offering that we have. We are certainly not perfect, but we work hard every single day to provide the services that we provide. So just to recap, a couple of things that were discussed, because I know there's a lot of numbers that have been thrown around. Our rate adjustment request is simply based on two items. It's based on recovering the disposal increases that we've incurred in 2018, as well as recycling processing fees that we have incurred in 2018. And as per Section 504.2 of our contract, we are allowed to bring those to council for consideration, which we're doing. We are simply trying to get hold for costs that we incurred in 2018. As I mentioned before, it was effectively a dollar fifteen per home per month that we've incurred in new disposal fees. That's a fee that we pay Methin Sanitation to dispose of the waste that is transferred to. That is nothing that had anything to do with us. In most city contracts like this, that is considered a pass-through expense. So we wouldn't be here even presenting today, it would simply be something that the city clerk would do a calculation and say, "Your disposal rate went up, therefore we have to raise the rates, because that's a pass-through." The second one is the recycling processing fee, and we had a lot of great dialogue around that last week, around why we're paying a processing fee and what's that all about. I talked about China a couple sessions ago, and what we're seeing globally in terms of the recycling market and the contamination that we're seeing, and the lack of buyers for products, and therefore we're seeing charges to dispose of this material. And currently, we're paying eighty-five dollars per ton, which represents about a dollar nineteen per home. So two dollars and thirty-four cents is what we've incurred in 2018. This is costs that we incurred to simply do what we've always been doing. So effectively, we wrote a check for over a hundred thousand dollars as a company to just have the honor of continuing to provide waste services to the city. That's all we're trying to recover. In fact, we're not going to recover at all. We've asked for a two dollar and three cent increase, and the costs we've incurred are two dollars and thirty-four cents. So this does not cover wage increases, which these fine folks deserve. It's been two years since they've had a wage increase, and I promised that out of this increase, even though it doesn't cover our costs, they're going to get a raise, because they need it. And so this doesn't cover wage increases, this does not cover insurance cost increases. Insurance costs went up fifty percent last year, thanks to texting, and I think the police could probably vouch for this. Insurance companies are seeing people texting and running into our garbage trucks, and running into larger vehicles. And therefore, nobody wants to insure anybody that has large vehicles. And so these are the kind of costs that we're seeing. And I heard someone say earlier, when they looked at your budget and said, "No budget can take a hit like that." Our budget took a hundred and fifty thousand dollar hit last year, and we're simply trying to get that back. That's nothing for these gentlemen here and ladies that work hard every day, it's simply to try and recover costs that we spent to have the honor to service the city of Harrison. And it's very important to us, don't get me wrong. We truly do appreciate the opportunity to serve you. The next page just gives you a little bit of history, and this is history that goes back to when we started the contract in 2013. The previous vendor that you had, Methin Sanitation, was charging twenty-four dollars and fifty cents per home. Six years later, we're at eighteen dollars and ninety-seven cents, asking for a two dollar and three cent increase that will take us to twenty-one dollars and ninety cents. We are effectively three dollars per month and thirty-six dollars less expensive than what the city was paying in 2012. That's seven years ago. This is creating an untenable situation for our company. We've had two increases of thirty-nine cents or 4.7 percent in almost six years. Now, I mentioned earlier, we talked about recycling, and I thought it was a very productive discussion that we had last week. As part of this increase, I committed two weeks ago that we would partner with the city on education around recycling. And I'm very proud that we've taken a quick effort to put together a sticker that we're looking for city approval, and we won't do anything until we have that, that is the do's and don'ts of recycling. And so this is a sticker that we've drafted, it's ready to go, it's going to be a fifteen thousand dollar investment that we're prepared to do as part of this rate adjustment that we're requesting today. And it's simple, it's going to sit on the stickers on the front of all the carts, on the top lid, and it's going to help residents say, "What can go in and what can't?" And if you remember, we talked a lot about pizza boxes last time, and the fact that a soil pizza box should not be in the recycling, a lot of people in the audience said they didn't know that, and so we're hoping this is going to provide education. And we're going to continue to work with some of the schools that have said that they're going to have, they may have students that might want to help us put these stickers on the carts. We're also going to put these stickers on all the front-load containers that we have around town, the large containers that we pick up recyclables in. And so we're going to really use this to jumpstart an education program to see if we can continue to bring the contamination of the recycling that we picked up down. Because in talking to some of the folks here, there's a lot of trash that ends up in recycling. And we're hoping this helps it, but it's going to take a lot of effort by all of us to partner together to clean that. And then finally, on the last page, this just shows the rate adjustments which you've seen before. This is the effect that it's going to have on the residential rate, which is a two dollars and three cents, which is, again, less than the two dollars and thirty-four cents that we have incurred as a result of the disposal fees to Methin and the recycling processing fees. And so I respectfully request that the council consider this, and make a resolution to, I guess, get us halfway there in terms of recovering some of the costs that we pay to continue to provide the service to the city of Harrison. So I'd appreciate your taking questions, if there are any, you can make that motion stand.
When you first came in to Harrison, you had little magnets that listed recycles. Well, I've lost my refrigerator.
These are the fridge magnets, like, we used to use those.
And do you still have?
They're available. I haven't used them in probably ten years, because a lot of the new refrigerators are stainless steel, and they don't stick. To be honest with you.
The glass side does.
Yeah, but those are things that we can definitely take a look at.
Well, I think it would help people to be more aware.
Yeah. I think the stickers that you'll find on the carts, I mean, you're going to see it before you throw, you use that cart. It's going to be a large sticker that'll help, but I appreciate those comments, and you know, we're, I'll go back to the picture, we're, you know, we could turn that into a magnet as well. I mean, all these things are available, there's a cost obviously associated with them, but we'd love to partner with the city on doing some of this.
I've also noticed your large ads in the newspaper about recycling.
Someone last session, I know you were not able to attend, said, "Don't spend money on ads, put it into stickers." They said, "Nobody reads it."
I understand.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
I had noticed.
There's many different channels of communication, we recognize that, and we'll look at those things and look for your input.
Okay. Any other questions?
If the community, if Orion or where the community decided not to recycle, currently that's eighty-five dollars a ton, would that change the cost of the waste disposal that's currently sixty dollars a ton?
Yes, you would see that go into trash, so.
Right, but I mean, would that cost go up? In other words, if we didn't recycle at all, we would save twenty-five dollars a ton. I know recycling's not the biggest percentage.
Right.
But that would simply go into that sixty dollar per ton price, right?
Correct. So you would save twenty-five a ton on however many tons of recycling, it would probably be...
Then our community wouldn't be a recycling community anymore.
And then as I spoke, and I think a number of you have been there, when you see the recycling center, and Mary's here that runs it for us, she does an incredible job, we have a lot of people in this town that go through that recycling center. I mean, it is a passion, and it's something that I, to be honest, haven't seen in many contracts where a recycling contractor would run a facility like that. It's very elaborate. I mean, that you're taking white goods, and we're taking TV sets, and all these things that are very difficult to recycle, and very expensive for us to find homes for. That's a very nice attribute that you have here in the city. I think it's something to really be proud of.
I have a few comments I'd like to make. I think that, and I've had several folks contact me about this issue, ten percent is steep, really steep, and I understand where a lot of your figures are coming from, but it's just, it's a lot. And I've had single moms come to me, I've had elderly folks come to me and say, you know, it may not seem like a lot, but it means, it's two dollars, and then, you know, look at what we're doing to the large users. But I just think that, you know, it seems like maybe you're saying that you're the only business that has incurred obstacles like this, and how have you, I'd just like to say that the business that I work for has incurred costs due to things such as steel pairs, and it has impacted us greatly. But my business has found ways to tighten the belt, and we've done well. And I think that it would behoove you guys to look at tightening your belts and not And I think that it would behoove you guys to look at tightening your belts and not think that just because you incur obstacles like this, that you can come before us and everything's going to just happen. I'm not on board for a ten percent increase. And I think that, I think maybe three percent, but to me, ten percent is outrageous.
If I could give a couple of comments, I think we have tightened our belt. I'm actually surprised we weren't here with this request three years ago. If you look at the CPI, just what you pay your workers at the city, I'm sure it averages two, two and a half percent per year, I would imagine. I don't know that for a fact. From 2012 to now, that rate would have gone up by fifteen to sixteen percent. Two and a half, two and a half, two and a half, two and a half, two and a half. That's probably fifteen to eighteen percent. In six years, we've seen four point seven percent. So we've tightened our belt because we haven't got eighteen, we've got four point seven. So we've tightened our belt by twelve percent. And then now, something that we don't have control over, transfer station in town, which is the only ability to deliver waste, raises the price by almost fifty percent, from forty-two dollars to sixty dollars. So we, I understand that, and we're continuing to do that because I'm not even asking for the whole amount. I'm not asking for the amount over and out this that's going to give these gentlemen and ladies a raise, that's going to pay the increased insurance costs. We are here only looking for relief for the amount that we had to write. When we started 2018, we were in this position here. And at the end of the year, we were in this position and didn't do anything any different, except we added a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in costs to handle material that we collect on the city's behalf. That's all we're asking for. I'm not saying, you know, we need more money to do things and raise stuff. We haven't even seen a standard increase every single year. As I said earlier, typical contracts have built-in CPIs that are not, that are not based on council's decision. A CPI is a CPI. Most contracts say the vendor gets the two or two and a half percent like your public workers would get. And so we haven't had that. We've tightened our belt by twelve percent in the last six years that we haven't received. And so we've already done that, and we will continue to do that. But these are for costs that have incurred outside the regular course. And I just don't want to get those two things confused because if had we had two and a half percent every year for the last six years, the rate would be twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six dollars. Had you not changed contractors in 2013, the rate would be thirty dollars right now because twenty-four fifty times eighteen percent is probably thirty-five dollars. And so we're not even where we would have been in the seniors and the people that you mentioned, what they were paying seven years ago is more than what we're looking at even going to today. So that to me is a lot of bike-to-belt tightening, that we were able to bid the contract and still not come back for increases only twice in seven years.
Also, what I've had folks ask me about is could we do more value-added, like cost structure, like say, those single moms and those, and just the elderly couple at home on fixed impact. They may not fill up that can. And what we've got going on now is a cookie cutter situation. Where it's not, it's not cost-effective for those folks. They're not getting the value there. And I feel like they probably feel better about paying what they pay if they saw some benefit from it.
There's no question. I mean, we bid an RFP that was put out by the city in 2013 by the city's design. If the city wanted to do a plan design change, which I've seen many times before, it's called pay-as-you-throw, where if you have a can this big, you'll pay fifty dollars a month. This one's thirty, the small one's twenty. And so there's incentive for people to recycle. I've also seen one, and a gentleman here approached me before the meeting, saying, "What about the senior citizens?" Typically, rate structures have a citizen's discount, potentially even a single mom discount. I mean, all those things are possible, but that's not within our control. The city puts out an RFP and a structure that we bid on. And if the city would like to redo the whole structure, those are all on the table. But sitting here today, we are trying to recover the hundred and some thousand dollars we spent last year just to do the same thing that we did...
So you're saying we could do something like that before our contract is out?
Yeah, if, obviously, we would want to be involved in those discussions to make sure that, because at the end of the day, it's subsidization, right? If someone's going to get a discount because they're a senior, then somebody's going to pay more. I mean, it's the way the world works. But at the end of the day, the number out the back end is still the same number. So there's many different things that you can do to get there. And those are things that we could do work sessions and work with the city, and maybe this time next year, we roll out a structure that has those options. Those are all possible, and we would entertain those under the current agreement. You know, provided that at the end of the day, we're still able to run trucks. Someone said a five hundred thousand dollar fire truck, our garbage trucks are three hundred thousand dollars. So those are the costs that we've incurred and continue to incur. But yeah, we'd be open to that.
Do we not have a program when they got, they rolled the cans out, you had a standard residential garbage? It seemed like there was a smaller can, I thought, available for a little less.
It's the one they have smaller cans.
And it was a little bit less a month than it was maybe for, you know, small family or...
It's called low volume.
Low volume.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you have something, Chris, that's available, I'm not sure the details on it and how much less that it is. Mary?
It's approximately, the low-volume can is approximately about, I want to say a dollar less a month.
Less, okay.
There is a low-volume can, it's a little bit smaller, but...
All I'm sure are the same cans everywhere.
Almost hard to tell unless you get right up on it.
But as I said, those are things that we could certainly look at. That's a whole lot of change, and it takes a lot of effort and a lot of thought, but it's definitely doable. There's other cities doing it across the country. It's not you.
Any other council members, comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, as well, limited feedback I have received from the public, and it hasn't been very limited, and I thought there would be more of that. I've had not, I haven't had very many people object to this as much as I thought they would. And, you know, I try and weed out as much as I can from this, because some of these discussions, you know, if we, if Orion or Inland doesn't do this, or perform this function in the city anymore, is another contractor going to have the same cost structure, you know, sixty dollars a ton for trash and all of that? So some of this is a little bit difficult, it's very complicated. All the things we're looking at. And one of the things we haven't got here tonight, this makes us one of the highest costs in Arkansas for our services. And I don't, I don't see that here tonight, and it concerns me. But I do think, as I look at this, I don't think it's appropriate for them to bear all of the cost of what they've had thrown at them. It's a very difficult discussion to have, and I wish we would have had more in committee with some details because of that. Because when you get to this point, and it's why we're all sitting in these seats, whether they're hot or not, what, how you vote. None of these votes generally are a hundred percent. And so this is a difficult one to do, whether you're fifty-one for or fifty-one against. That being said, I don't know that we need to table this any longer either. So those are my comments.
Okay. Anyone else? Do we have anybody from the audience that would like to speak on this matter? I'm logging in. What's your name? You want to come up here?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, City Council. Because I'll know me, and I've told you many times, complain about it. What I can complain about, the fixed stuff. And I will challenge anybody sitting at this table that I know more about the garbage business than you rest in. Because I have studied this thing. I studied inland, I've studied the flow of garbage. And when you draw it out on whiteboard, the flow of garbage from your house to the landfill, you'll get the picture. I think it's, they should get the two dollars and eight cents, in my personal opinion, they should get two thirty-four, behold, for what they spent, and then get it back in cycle. Because, continue, we've got chains. And I think the recycle idea is awesome. And then they came up, I believe, that the last time, or somebody did, and loved brainstorming, and this is just to me awesome. Actually, my wife and I had a conversation about what's recyclable, and I said, "You can't recycle no junk." And she says, "Oh, I can't?" And I said, "Well, I don't know, I'm sure now," I said, "No, you're right." So, yeah, we can. So it's been a very confusing thing, but I really think these people on the road, to me, things right, they've had, I'll be frank with you, and I've told these gentlemen, your worst part of inland is buried, let's just have a funeral party, now it's gone. The worst parts are history. And you, most of you lived through that history back in, well, how long, how many years did it get kicked down the road, Mitch?
Okay. How long?
I remember vividly, Mitch Magnus says, "How much longer are we going to kick this down the road?" And that was in 2017. We knew it on council, and I think we're a team chimed right in, "How much longer are we going to be kicking that road?" We kicked it all we can. And I will say, I've done some looking at the rates, Mark, he's a very good friend of mine, and I know what he charges in Southern Hills, and it's about five dollars more than what Harrison would be with the rate place. So people say, "Brave Methin, back pay, contract built in 2022, if he's a little better, do that." But till then, if you shut these people down, you go out of business, then you go to Mark Methin, and he comes back and says, "Okay, I'll do it for twenty-nine dollars a month." And that's about where you're going to be. See what he do. I urge you to feel these, make these people hope. I think you should go for two, give them the two dollars and thirty-four cents and move open. Because these people, these are the only people that Chris talks about, he and I had a good talk today about this. Understand that. But you've got to remember, they were paying twenty-four, twenty-five dollars in 2012. So they've got a big discount for all these years. So give them the two thirty-four and get it where it needs to be, fresh, clean, and you know what? All I'll say, if they can't afford two thirty-four, buy one less six pack of beer, or one less pack of cigarettes.
Okay. All right, Mr. Coons, thank you.
Long-term stock in drag.
That's a preacher.
Mr. Mayor, another question.
You bet.
The increase is on the commercial, is that based on the same sixty dollars you want to contribute?
Yes, and, yeah, and the recycling as well. We pay the recycling prices.
So the commentary of what the increase is for the resident, so you're not subsidizing one versus the other?
No, it's the same rates and the same increase.
Have we had any comments in terms of commercial collection customers?
No. No. No, the service has turned around. As far as price?
Right.
I mean, you know what it is. Facebook has loved it.
Oh, yeah.
There's probably five hundred comments, not one of them wants to give an increase. But...
I can promise you, I didn't call Energy and ask them to raise my price.
We encourage those people to show up tonight, they're not here.
But on that same token, you have the option to use less electricity and it will lower your bill. We do not have that option here.
Commercial businesses do. Commercial businesses can reduce their container size, and the ones that are good recyclers do. Residential, we have the small can. I can't change the current system that the city bid out. And so that's, I don't think that's what we're trying to decide tonight. I think it's to decide what we currently are dealing with. And just to make a comment to Mr. Magnus's comment on the highest rates around, I think we talked about that last time, and some of the inputs into our contract and the distances that we travel to dispose of material and to take recycling is a hamstring to the contract. If you shut down the recycling center that we just talked about, that is something that no one else has, and that would be a significant reduction in the current rates as well. But I don't think anybody wants to do that. But those are some differences that make the rates stand out, there's no question.
And we do have a Cadillac service that we took the bid on. I mean, we have the large pickup every Thursday, get the bigger curb, and recycle. We do have, we did bid a service with...
Okay. Nobody else from the audience? Do we have a motion?
Somebody that we approved a two dollar and three cent increase.
We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? It doesn't call for one, but I don't see no reason why we can't. Sure. Sure. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Chris Hen?
Negative.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Linda Boswa?
Yes.
Linda what?
Linda Boswa.
Linda?
Bill?
I didn't know you were my sister.
Yes. Yes. Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Kung?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Congratulations. High job.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate it. These folks are doing a great job, and we really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to link her when this was in effect. I wish you'd stepped in beforehand.
We'll send you the bill tonight.
And I apologize also, Luke brought this up earlier, it needs to be...
If we can, and I've already sent out bills for, like, today, I just sent them out.
Yeah, we expected it'd probably be the first of, what are we here, April, April 1st, I guess, was our hope, thirty days each week?
We'll do March 31st, that's...
Okay, that's what we anticipated. Most cities have...
I don't...
It's the same building.
We're going to have our folks maybe tip off, they've got to get some sleep.
Absolutely. Thank you all again, folks. We appreciate it.
Keep up the good work.
I am concerned that we can, that they need to look for alternatives. You had Michigan looking at long spring, getting with some of this. And I think that the fact that we have a recycling center in this community supports recycling, we want to continue that. And if there's anything else that we can do to help the community, that they need to work to mitigate some of those costs that they have.
Yeah, and I'm sure they will, it's to their benefit to do that. We'll work with you on recycling and other things, something that I really have wanted to address for some time. And I know it's not your fault, it's not our fault, but we have so many streets that have the blue containers sitting on the curb twenty-four seven. And it just does not look good. Those things need to be drug back to the house. I don't know how to enforce that, but maybe we can just publicize that as a request.
You're talking to carts. Many cities have ordinances that require residents to not put them out before six o'clock the night before and have them off by six P.M.
Does it seem to work okay?
Yeah, oh yeah. It's, I mean, it all depends on enforcement usually, but...
What would you do to enforce, what would you do?
Someone in the city's department that has some authority would sticker the can or something that'd say, "Hey, you're supposed to have this in," warnings or things like that. I mean, that's what we typically see.
Okay, well, we need to address that.
It's everything, it's eighty-twenty. Eighty percent of the people are going to do it, twenty percent aren't.
Well, eighty percent would be great. Okay. Yeah, thank you. Mr. Baughman?
Yes.
Do you want to speak now, or do you want to wait until...
No, I was speaking about what you were talking about. Third thing we need to do to do that, and they need to have a certain time to meet your place. One week, it don't be in the morning, need to be in the morning, next week in the afternoon. Understand?
No, I don't understand, but that's okay, it's because I can't hear you that well.
Just a minute. I don't mind giving up our lead.
He wants the same schedule.
The schedule needs to be the same every week.
Okay, and it's not now?
Oh, no.
Okay. I guess you heard that request?
Yeah, so we try and do the same schedule, I mean, our employees have lives too, they want to get homes at the same time and all that. The problem is, is if we have a breakdown, we have someone that doesn't show up that day because they're sick, then we split routes, and we say, "Okay, you do your route and half of his, and then I'll do the other half." And so I would say we're fairly consistent because we run standard routes, but there's definitely going to be days where we aren't.
What time did you start?
The ordinance is 6:00 AM for residential, and I don't know, are we on the street date at 6:00 for residential or is it...
Yes, I can grab for that.
You're the first house, that's the order is.
No, I know in my neighborhood, the recycle runs quite early.
Yeah, this could be 6:00, yeah.
I, I have no complaint with it.
They're on South Cherry, 6:00.
See, we're very consistent, but we're not, obviously it's not every single time because there's car breakdowns and stuff.
Mr. Baughman, if you wouldn't mind tracking that for about 90 days and reporting to us on what time of day it comes every week?
Excellent.
Yeah, and then we'll have some facts to go by.
Well, let's see, on February the 8th?
Well, yeah, I understand, we need to get a time period that'll, that we can look at a, a long time period, three months I think would make sense.
I'm just thinking about this month. February the 8th, I call it.
Won't be jumped specifically to the job.
Yeah, and if it's happening to him, it's kind of the same for other people.
It was all a grand view and those are the matters.
Okay, okay, they'll get to speak to you afterwards, thank you, Mr. Baughman. Okay, where are we?
Still got me, Mr. Mayor, I, I would like to add one caveat and then I'm done with Inland for now. I would like to thank publicly Chris.
Yeah.
For standing up for not only his police, but his area people to contact them. That's a big change from what this organization used to do. It did not happen before.
Excellent, I agree.
And to have an open, honest, frank discussion about something, don't take this wrong, fellas, but something as mundane as trash rates, where we'll have other issues that be far heavier in regards to budget or whatever, and you can have a discussion like that and when the smoke clears, we can still walk out of here and shake hands.
Absolutely.
I want to say, Chris, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Chris, thank you.
Okay.
I'm ready.
I'll as well.
What I'm going to do, Mr. Mayor, it's all right, I'm just going to turn these other two out of the way, they're really in his ballpark, he and I already discussed, we discussed these in committee and I think they'll go through fine, but Wade, I'm going to let you have at it.
Which one's first?
Annual contracts.
Annual contracts, okay, those were handed out at committee meetings, or just put up on the drive. More is an informational items, anybody have any questions about anything that they've seen?
Same thing we do every year.
Yeah, and the concrete and material bids that I rejected on the last round, we did actually open those today, we got lots of bids, so we'll be able to move forward with those. APAC will be the concrete supplier for a one-year period starting tomorrow. And then actually some of the materials, the, the base and gravel and different things, those will be split a little bit between APAC and Jordan Inc. But I'll have those, I'll get that information out to you, I've not done a bid tab since we opened them this afternoon. But does anybody have any questions or anything about the bids that, that we've seen so far?
Do we need a motion to approve that again? I'll make that motion, but to approve this contract.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Wade?
Head leader?
Streetlights?
Streetlights, okay. The follow-up on committee, and we were looking at adding some additional streetlights in Logan Heights, Eagle Heights, as well as neighborhoods that are part of the original plot of Harrison, that's going to be South Cherry, Maple and up to Sherman through that, that general area, try and hit some of these dark spots. Again, that was a, and that one is going to be a budget adjustment to 11,500, that's kind of what we're estimating annually going forward to do this. Just a reminder, this is not something, if it's approved, it's not going to happen fast. Energy has asked only to get a handful at a time so that we can work this out over several months, because if I send them a request for 50, 60 lights at one time, they're going to be a little bit bogged down and overloaded. We'll probably be looking at five every one to two weeks, I think is the schedule that they've given me. Does anybody have any questions as far as the process or requests in general?
Just a general point, I had more conversation with citizens in regard to this than I did the trash rates.
I hope it was all good.
It was all very positive. In fact, probably had 15 contacts with citizens that were appreciative of us doing this.
And this, this will be a first effort to try and improve this to that town. We're not going to hit everything we want to, but just the sheer size, trying to get 100-plus lights in, work it out with Energy and then try to not, you know, hit our costs too fast. This seems to be a manageable program for us to get into. One other thing I have been asked, two things actually I've been asked to look at is, I've had a citizen concerned about adding too much light because they, they want us to adopt a dark sky policy, are you made familiar with that?
Yep.
Buffalo National River is, is, the parks have adopted that policy. And we have standards as far as commercial development, commercial lighting that actually adopt many of those policies and the way that works. With Energy, it's going to be a little bit difficult, I mean, their, their lights are partial cutoff lights, full cutoff is what you need, it's where basically you have no light that's extending above a 90-degree angle from the light itself. So, you know, ratting's not going to be terribly problematic for the dark sky request, so it's not something we're really going to be able to adopt fully as the city knows because it's your cost. Another item, actually, Councilman Boswell brought up when we were discussing yesterday, was the possibility of doing solar powered lighting. Been able to do a little bit of research. It's not going to be necessarily cost-effective in locations where Energy has overhead lines, and we have poles that we can take advantage of from out of lights, it's just the cost comparatively between putting in our own solar powered LEDs versus just paying them up in tariff, it's not real comparable right now. Where it may be advantageous though, is in those areas where Energy has buried cable, where we'd be looking at significant upfront costs to get the tonnage, like to get everything in place, so that doesn't really affect what we're talking about on this program, but we're, we're going to take a look at a few different options in the coming year. I won't need a budget adjustment, we'll do it under normal operating to look at, you know, how well these actually work and whether they'd be feasible in some of those areas where the, where the cost of putting traditional grid-powered lights would be somewhat prohibitive. And I'd be happy to entertain any other questions.
Wade, I have had two people talk to me the last two days reference the Hester Drive area, which has underground facilities out there.
Yes.
Actually, they want to come to the next committee meeting and address that with the council. About what you may be looking at doing, but underground facilities.
Well, that was, when I was originally putting the map together looking at this, the Hester area was the fourth area that we were looking at. So much of it is underground, that's why it's not included in this first round.
All right.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to approve additional streetlighting?
Absolutely, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carry, we got more streetlights.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Mr. Head.
Okay, first item on here has to do with Wade, so, take it Wade.
Yeah, this is the big wave of request for the clarifier rehabilitation of wastewater. It is not a budget adjustment, it's a budgeted expense, but since it is over the $20,000 statutory limit, we are required to either through a competitive bidding or get approval from councils to award it through a sole source. The, the company that, that provides this work is a, the sole provider for Door Oliver Equipment in our region, so if we put it out to bid, they would be the only ones authorized to bid, so there's really no benefit to go through the bid process and paying the cost of advertising and preparing specs and things like that.
I'll make a motion to approve the big wave with the clarifiers, second.
Okay, we have a, and this is an ordinance, and we are going to need roll call here, and then we would also like to follow it up with the second and third reading because this is mainly...
Well, that marks the place, I think, I think they do that.
One read, this is a one read, the other one?
By title, by title.
Know someone has a copy of it, I'd be happy to read the title if someone...
Okay. Okay.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Yeah, no discussion. We, roll call.
I guess he needs to read, is it, no?
I think he reads it accurately, right?
Okay. Mary Jean Creeker?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Linda DeWolfe?
Yes.
Bill Moswell?
Yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Cohn?
Yes.
Chris Hen?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Do we need any Florida work?
Yeah, and I don't know if it's an emergency, but it does require a second and a third.
We don't need an emergency, but I think the motion was to read the title only, we just need one, this is just a one reordance, we don't need a motion for that, this is just a one reordance.
Okay, so that's it?
Okay, I'll read the title, an ordinance approving wave for a bidding requirement for procurement of final clarifier rehabilitation parts and services. Make the emergency call.
Yeah, a motion to adopt.
Absolutely, second.
Senator roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
The next item is an ordinance doing business with city employees, and I think this is an effort to just keep things above board and not much more, and I think since we've all had copies of this and had the opportunity to look at it, I would entertain a motion that we approve this.
Make a motion, we place the ordinance for the first reading?
Second.
It'll be a one read also.
Okay. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next...
I'll read it. An ordinance authorizing certain city employees and officials to contract with the city.
Can you approve it?
To adopt.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I'll hold it in favor.
Aye.
I'm ready.
Okay, we got through those.
Next item has to do with the condemnation of properties as listed, and I think Jeff's got those for us to go through. And I think what we need to do is go through them maybe one by one and see if there's anyone who has any comment about them, maybe Wade has comment and...
I'll have the general comments, I'll bear on my collection comments specifically, more comments about that.
For my benefit, can we go in the order here?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we need a motion to approve 502 South Locust?
That's what I moved.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, 502 is gone.
We have resolutions. Yeah, there, there are six individual resolutions, one for each property.
Yeah.
Each resolution declares the property nuisance under the green premise ordinance, and then also condemns the property.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Sorry, Wade?
Go ahead.
Did we receive any other communication from the landowner?
We did.
Yeah, I was going to say that was going to be under some general comments that I'll offer any time.
Nothing negative. All positive.
Well, then I would make a motion if we print the resolution for 509 South Dickerson.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
The second.
Joel? Uh, anyone opposed? Okay, that one's gone, boy, that's about the worst. Thanks, bud.
I get that one, put that in my board.
I make a motion to approve or destroy 607 East Madison.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, see you later. What's next, 704 South Chestnut?
Make a motion, we demolish the house.
I like that ad.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. I think we have one more.
Yeah.
We have two more, this one's fallen down.
Linda, can you do this one?
Well, I was just sure, I thought it might be a little bit tougher, but...
I know too, that's human. Okay. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. One more. Spruce.
Yeah. This one's down the street from my place.
This is a burnout.
Make a motion and we approve the other, uh, request to destruct 817 North Spruce.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, I want to recognize Ralph Jones, you've been working on this quite a while and we finally put these babies to bed, so...
That's great.
I have you like a dad, you're welcome, you go find us some more.
Sitting next to Ralph is Jeremy Johnson, who also helps a lot with building with these.
Jeremy.
It's just Jeremy.
And we get a lot of help from Chief Lowery and the Fire Inspector, Clint Nichols. So it's kind of, it's a group after working on these because there's different, there's different ways that they can be problematic, whether it's through fire code, building code, green premise, stuff like that, so. Couple of quick comments, since these are approved, the next step will be to do a full title search on each property, make sure that there's no unknown mortgages or lien holders out there that we need to address before we, I guess, demolish their, what they give a loan on, but we have had contact, one property owner has asked about what to do with the property after it's demolished, they are considering just dedicating the property over to the city, in-lives, having to deal with us placing a lien on their property and then trying to sell it. That'll be coming, that'll be forthcoming, I guess, at a later meeting. I was also actually contacted right before the meeting about one of the property owners who wants to get this taken care of themselves. So, we always hope that's going to be the case, I told them, I told the property owner, we'll, we'll probably move forward with the resolutions and go forward with the process. So after the title search is done, we'll do proper notification through certified mail as well as posting the properties themselves. Once the notification is done, there's 30 days that take place before we can actually move on to the site. Now, we're probably not going to be sitting out there at 8:00 AM waiting for that 30th day to come through. We're actually looking at the possibility of just using a contractor to get these done quickly and not taking up too much of the city's forces, so. And I've also been contacted by individuals in the community that just want to buy them and pare them down themselves and flip the property. All of those things can happen, but the time's going to get started and so if the property changes hands, somebody cleans it up do the demolition ourselves, or through a contractor, great. We save the money, they've got a property they can try to sell. So I just kind of want to let you know that those, you know, there may be some things that change in the next 30 to 45 days as far as how these properties, these structures come down and what happens with it. With that, any other questions that we have to answer?
I think the only question will probably be, based on everything and no hiccups, when do they expect they will start coming down?
I would say with doing the title search, doing, getting the notifications ready, 45 days would be the earliest we'd start on a deal. Two of them have got, we know have got asbestos, so those will be far slower than the others as well.
Okay, we don't have any old business that I know of, no new business. My comments, I just want to make one comment, and we're going to go back to the blinds matter, and I know that's behind us and something we've all wanted to put behind us, but the community and you folks in the audience have no idea what your city did, and I'm not talking about financially, I'm talking about the manpower and the people and the commitment to find the two bodies. I think it starts with Fire Chief, you and your entire department, we had Tom, we had an expert out there that probably didn't sleep much, he was, you know, for two months straight. He was wanting to find these bodies, Wade was heavily involved in it, you know, Public Works and worked in that lake. I know that didn't turn out the way we expected, but we all had very good reason to believe they were this side of the weir, and they weren't, we understand that. And then the latter part, Chief Craddy and Chief Kegel got heavily involved in the police department. So this city had a solid two months that, you know, rarely a minute went by that we weren't talking about for the lines and and I think if you go up to Highland, this is where the accident occurred, I am really impressed Wade, he came up with an idea, I don't know if this would have prevented that one, but it may prevent something in the future, and we were going to do the first one on Highland where the car went in, and there is a curb now, probably 10 inches high and fairly thick, painted bright yellow, and there are two signs on each side of the creek there that also warn, you know, not to go through.